Especially consideration possible action in dock ordinance 973 to amend the offering sabotage standards within industrial zoning districts. Matt, basically this is a change that was not based on billboards?
Yes, the industrial district standards for billboards or offering sabotage are vague at best. Historically, the community development department has issued billboard permits in industrial districts up to square footage of 500 square feet displayed surface area. In some areas, that's going to be overwhelming, so we brought this before planning commission to look at, look at the ordinance and look at some of the industrial sites in which some of these billboards may be located. The recommendation was to allow signs up to 325 square feet, which is substantially smaller. I put some examples up for your reference that I believe most of us are familiar with. The one that are the, the Oregon Water Tower, those are approximately, that's about 576 square feet, they're about 12 by 24 stacked upon each other. The, the one on the right side of the screen is 672 square feet, that's a 14 by 42 fairly large sign. So, the proposal here, what, what planning commission proposes to chemical standards that would also apply to these, these billboards to regulate how they're constructed. So, if you don't have wooden poles, folks will have wooden pole signs. The, so in, in the ordinance, the specific standards are for one sign not to exceed nine by 18, but they could be stacked upon each other. So then you get a square footage of about 324.
Okay, basically what this, there were some areas that were coming in, there's bigger signs that would really be overpowering what they were, but just to put this perspective, you know, a 16 by 16, which is a 16 foot by 16 foot, you know, that's only 256 feet total. So, I mean, it's, the 300 feet's still a very big sign.
It's a big sign. The way that it's proposed is it would be two 9 by 18 stacked, 9 by 18 is your average or standard parking space size, so just as a point of reference, two of those stacked upon each other. When set off the road, according to ODOT standard, you have to be about 30 feet off the, off the white line. And, yeah, it starts getting smaller, right? It still is a large sign though.
So, you can't do one 18 by 18?
Right, that's not the way, that's not the way the ordinance is.
Okay. Okay, any other questions? Got a motion?
So do we.
Not a second. Second, real call, let's start with Delaney. Yes.
Councilor Conister?
Yes.
Councilman Robinson?
Yes.
Councilman Archer?
Yes.
Mayor White.
Yes. 18, discussion of various possible ordinance, 974, remain the neighborhood character within R1, 2, 3 districts, the Oregon City Ordinance. Basically, I'm going to kind of sit this down a little bit, you know, I think we're all, go ahead, Matt.
There are many neighborhoods in town that don't have covenants to, to guide some of the development within the neighborhood. There are things that would be allowed by the zoning code that could be detrimental to the neighborhood. Some of those include modular manufactured structures that are meant for human occupancy, such as classroom space or dwelling. As long as, as long as a, as a modular manufactured structure meets international building code or international residential code, they could be used for, for a home. And within some neighborhoods, that's not going to be appropriate. So this, this ordinance is two-part. The first part is to address modular manufactured structures meant for human occupancy. The second part is to restrict height limit on accessory structures. There's many areas in town where folks have built accessory buildings to use as storage that really sort of overwhelmed the law. They may meet all the zoning codes. The height limit within our residential districts are 35 feet, but for an accessory structure, that is somewhat excessive. So, what planning commission recommended is that for modular manufactured homes within R1, excuse me, modular manufactured structures meant for human occupancy require conditional use permit within R1, R2, and R3 districts, and also within R1, R2, and R3 districts. Cap the height limit for accessory structures at 20 feet.
Okay, well, let me kind of sum this up real quick. The bottom line is, is that Councilman Robinson and I, we got a call at church here town, you know, they, they stuck up some modular buildings in their parking lot, and I, you know, I can understand that, you know, maybe they might need more space or whatever else, but I didn't know how long it'll be there. Well, come to find out, they're going to be there forever. And, and in that particular area, they were, they weren't covered in this, in this specific deal. And it's kind of one of those things, I don't want to see modular stuff up here unless there's a conditional use permit. And the neighbors didn't get any notification to it or anything else. No one's against the church, no one doesn't care what they do, but in that deal, I think the city, the, the city and planning commission are kind of speaking for JT and him, they probably would have maybe, if it's going to be permanent at that point in time, they maybe would have had a brick halfway up or do some things like that that we discussed that we'd like to see, you know, that I'd like to see. I think that goes back to what Robinson's and I problems were, and I think Matt took the planning commission. The bottom line is, it gives an opportunity for them to, to, to take advantage of a lower cost vehicle of what they might have to do, but also it gives them a, a conditional use permit of what they want to do. And then also, we can set timeframes on that. Like I told Matt, there could be a tornado and there could be modular places that had to be set up there in the area, you know. Moore was very hit, and there were several businesses that were, worked on modular, you know, places for, for a couple of, you know, about a year and a half until they built some of that, but there was timeframes on there. Even our deal out there at Marcy, I think, had a timeframe on it of two years, is that right? Okay. But, but anyway, I think it goes back to the point where that's kind of what we did. And the other one was a, and these are some things I want the public to understand, these are things that, that happened based on the laws that are currently, and now we saw they're happening, and we don't agree with, so we're trying to change them. There was a structure in a historical area that a guy built a barn and had every right to build a barn, a metal barn in kind of an older area, and it's a very big, big, big area, big barn, and it's kind of looks a little out of place. I think we've all got calls on that, and I did. Delaney, yeah, I'm sure you did. And, and the bottom line is, is that we need to change that in order to make, make it right, that it shouldn't be allowed, not trying to stop something, but also to hold integrity. I think JT was kind of the champion of this, just basically to hold the character of an neighborhood, is that right?
Right, yeah.
Okay. So, I, I think that's, these are some of the things that I want people to know, when they happen, they happen because the law was there for them, and we understand that, and now we have to understand what the aspects were of it so we can change that and make it better and modify it. Does that make sense? So those are two particular questions. JT, any other questions?
Yeah, a couple of questions. Matt, is there no difference between 361 dash 46B4 and 361 dash 47B4 on the ordinance?
We reach exactly the same.
Is that the new, is that the new version?
That, those are the changes that are going to be included in the, in the code. So, 361 46B4 is the reference to R1 high elements.
And R2?
47 is, is R2, and 48 is R3.
Okay, okay. Agree to exactly the same, but it's a different zoning district. I'd like to be able to modify, I like the modular part, the first part, the, unfortunately I didn't make it to the last planning commission meeting, but I don't know what we can do to maybe modify that to give city staff a little bit of discretion in the case of actually preserving, you know, if you limit an accessory structure to 20 feet, in some instances, a taller structure would preserve neighborhood, neighborhood character, like a garage apartment.
Garage apartment.
Or something like that. So, I don't know, maybe we can somehow build that in to allow city staff to make decisions or send it to the planning commission or do something.
If you approve garage apartment, maybe approve as, as, as long as the veneer meets the, the, the main structures beneath it, something like that.
Well, it wouldn't be an accessory structure where if it's a garage apartment, is that not considered a pertinence to the roof, to the house?
There'd be a house, there'd be a living, living.
They only have one primary structure on, on, on one lot, so it'd still be an accessory rental property or.
It is.
Or storage.
It's considered that way, is that what you're saying?
Yes, since it's one primary.
And we allow.
Yeah, go talk to the Canadian County tax guy, I got a couple garage properties, he doesn't judge it that way.
Accessory, accessory residential structures, are those allowed under all zoning, residential zoning districts?
I believe they are.
They are? Okay, well, that's the problem.
JT, you want to kick it back?
I think we could strike the second part and go ahead and approve the first part of D and kick that back and run it through one more time.
Kick it back, you want to go ahead and, and table this for the recommendation, send it back to planning commission?
Or we could just strike this, the second part of the ordinance and go ahead and send the modular part through.
Okay, let's just do that. We'll just send the modular part through and then we'll, the height restriction, we'll send back to planning commission, is that correct?
Just a little bit more, and then we'll be there.
Okay, is that okay? Okay, I'm making, is that a motion?
That is a motion.
Can we just, the ordinance is there it does.
Well, hang on, there's all, yeah, I say.
Sure, can you discuss again, just take striking portions from it?
Yeah.
Until we can add to it and whatever else.
But, yeah, you're not adding anything to it that's not.
We'll just strike on the subject matter.
Okay. So, we're going to strike, we're going to table, we're going, we're going to modify the deal, and we're going to approve the module, and then we're going to send the part that had the discussion on the height restriction back to planning commission to bring back to us. Is that okay?
You're striking everything before the word "and"?
Yes.
All the way down to section two?
That's correct. Okay. Okay. Who made that motion?
Josh.
Okay.
I think, I don't know, somebody did.
So, I can say, real call, let's start with, don't shake your head at us, you've been on vacation all week.
Councilman Robinson?
Yes.
Councilman Conister?
Yes.
Councilman Delaney?
Yes.
Mayor White.
Oh, yeah. All right. Okay, now, discussion of various possible action in dock ordinance, 977, the many structure height limits limitation of industrial differences here, we have ordinance. Matt, I'm going to be real quick with this. Bottom line is, is that this pertains to Halle Burton, the silos were so high, and then basically, the unit that goes on top to feed the material up there is another, what, 20 feet taller than the structure?
About that, around 30 feet if it's.
And, and you've got to have an offset, how many feet, Matt?
Two to one.
Two to one.
Two to one for, in the proposed ordinance, a two to one setback for every additional foot over the maximum allowed by the zoning district.
Okay. The bottom line is, they got plenty of setback because they're right in the middle of it, right in the middle of it, is that right?
Right, right.
Okay. Any questions, Mr.?
We really didn't have any definition either for antennas, poles.
No, that's right.
Elevator shaft.
That's right.
And as long as you have a proper setback, keep in mind, if a 30-foot elevator shaft on top of a 20-story building, you can't see if it's properly set back, you know, but if it's on a 20-foot building, you can't see it.
See, that's right.
So it affects the overall height requirement, that's what we're trying to do.
That's right.
Only affecting I-3, it's not affecting.
Only, I, I, yeah, only affecting.
And that's in, this hasn't been.
Oh.
Espraged.
Okay, yeah.
The wording was changed a little to clarify.
Is that the new one?
Yeah, yes.
Okay. The other one, you made me copy that, didn't you?
Yes. Very smug.
Yeah.
This was really complicated right here, says the same thing, but it was just really hard to interpret, so basically this got remade just to be more readable, and then let's see what else happened there.
All right.
It changed to apply to I-3 only and not all the industrial districts. So this, this exception to the accessory components only applies to I-3 districts and only those I-3 districts that aren't adjacent to the instant border yard. So it, it's very specific in when it would be allowed, and it would, you know, it'd be fairly rare it would occur.
Yeah, and that, that's just another benefit too of adding this I-3, you know, as we keep that in a really specific case, you know, whereas we could have done this a year and a half ago with the, you know, the old ordinance is.
I know, I know. All right. Enough of that, no sense picking up on everybody. All right, any other questions? All right, you have a motion?
Yes.
Not a second.
Second.
Real call, let's start with Delaney.
Yes.
Councilman Conister?
Yes.
Councilman Robinson?
Yes.
Councilman Archer?
Yes.
Mayor White.
Oh, yeah. Okay, we're going to 20, discussion of various possible action except annual financial statements and independent audit report for fiscal year 30 of 2014. Crawford, we got cash?
We got cash.
Come on up both of you.
We've also got.
Got a new, got a new fellow there, come on up.
We've also got, you've also got a clean opinion, so the gentleman to my right speak about your audit. Financial position wise, I don't know if you remember, we, we do this little formality thing, which takes a very complicated government set of financial statements that are 100 pages long and says, okay, what are we really trying to say here? On a scale of 1 to 10, are we in good shape, bad shape, okay shape? 10, we're in great shape, excellent shape? A 1, we're in terrible shape? We're hovering right around about a 6 and 1/2. It's a little bit better than where we were last year, we were about a 5.9. We were not as high as we were, maybe an 11, where we were about a 7 and 4. So, we've got a little bit of a decline, as you spend more money than you earn, or you store money in savings and then you spend it on something, your score will take a dip and it'll recover back in subsequent year. And basically, you, you saw about a 12% dip in those two-year periods of time, plus you recovered about a 6% of it in one year or so. You're hovering right around a 6 and 1/2, I'd say that's obviously better than satisfactory, which a 5 on our scale is where we're satisfactory.
And we've been worse.
Uh, you know, you could certainly have done much worse, and I, I've actually got a couple of governments that are hovering down around the lower ones, which, one thing you can tell about those governments is most of their numbers have minus signs or brackets in front of them or around them. And the less bracket you have, the better you are typically in, in the world of accounting. So, there's no magic to this, it's really math, it's simple math, but to read a set of government financial statements cover to cover, if you get past the table of contents, they'll give you a medal, especially when you get into situations like here, which is a, a complicated entity that is basically a state, federal, and local government all rolled up into one, with the addition of being your own bank at the same time. So, kind of like a miniature US government. So, all, the only thing you can't do is you can't print term length, I think you could, but you get in a lot of trouble. So, so, really, that's all I wanted to say is that this is some good copy table reading. If you want to see how that, that score gets calculated, there's about 15 ratios that we kind of analyze and rank and measure on a year-to-year basis. The good news is, is when this thing gets up to tell you that all of the numbers in this document are correct, means that all of them, and this one has to be correct also, because that's where those numbers are derived from. So, he's probably not going to talk very much about financial condition and health, so if you got that kind of stuff or those kind of questions, I'll, I'll answer them. But don't ask me any other questions, ask that guy.
Yeah, we'll be, we'll make this quick. The bottom line is, Crawford, we, we used to, when I had, when we had Bonnie, you and I've been in these meetings too, and we kind of had a change of council, I think we're back to, I think we're back to progressive council, trying to work things out a bit more. We stopped having these meetings, understanding, you know, it goes back to financials, and I know you're new, you did a very good job, you know, you only found a couple deficiencies, there's bad, it's Tony, shouldn't have, joking, okay.
I didn't know what you said.
No, I know, I was watching, yeah. The bottom line is, is if, if we could, we, sometimes we go, we used to go over, go over this with them. The performer, the, the chart you show absolutely simplifies things to kind of show you where you are, kind of shows you where kind of some of the debt is, where you should be, where you like to be, but just some of the funds, like, it's very complicated, you can't understand, I, I don't know if anybody can, but, but just kind of show them where, where some of the funds and some of where the notes are, and, and how recent the financials is always good, we kind of, kind of got a good council. And I would like to spend some time, if we could, we used to bring in a couple councils at two at a time, just to visit, we used to do that.
Point three here.
Kind of a financial workshop.
It was just, it was a quick workshop and what it was, if I could spend two, three minutes with you before, or Tony can, it's just a specific, and Tony needs to be there too, I forgot, you know, I didn't even think about, but Marcia and, we did, Marcia read Bill, would do it, now, right, Marcia, we going over, and Tony obviously needs to be there, but just kind of go over, just kind of give them a real brief rundown, they're not going to understand everything, but just kind of show them where the money is, kind of overwhelm them, just so they understand how the funds generally work. Does that make sense?
Absolutely.
Because you've got SRA, sound funds, and some other things, it just, it's very complicated the way they work, unless you sign a lot of documents and whatever else, you don't keep track of it, just to go over if you don't mind.
Absolutely.
Is that, I mean, is that okay with you? I, I want to do that, and if they want to show up, they can, they didn't, they didn't do that a couple of years in a row, but we're going to now, and I know, I know Timmy's, I'm sure you want to do it, JT, you always like to learn, so.
At the end of the day, it's, it's, it's not rocket science.
No.
When you look at the government as a whole, including all of its different entities, are you, are you spending more money than you're bringing in, or are you bringing in more money than you spend? If you continue to bring in more money than you spend, the score will go up. If you spend more money than you earn, the score will go down. I mean, it's, it's, if I had to reduce it to one thing, and obviously it is more complicated than that when you throw in debt, and the fact that you issue debt in one entity, buy the asset for a different entity between the city and the authority, and so it kind of complicates it a little bit, but, but that's right. And, and any kinds of guys want to discuss this of any.
And I'll be honest with you, I'm really kind of shocked that, that, not shocked that we did a good job, look, Tony, we did a good job, but usually, and I think Tony agreed with me, Delaney better, when you switch auditors, you know, especially someone's been here a long time, usually it.
They find something.
They, they, they find something, and.
All with him.
Well, I understand, but I'm just saying, and, and there's different, there's different theories of one auditor than another, they'd say there's not, I mean, I think different people with different eyes, or whatever you want to say. So, so I, I really appreciate the way that it was handled and the way it was done, and I think it went pretty smooth. I mean, smoother than I thought it was going to, didn't you, Tony? I mean, for, for the length of time that we did that, does that make sense? Okay.
Absolutely.
Anything else?
Unless there's questions for financial, then we'll hold it down and let him talk.
Any questions?
I want to perform.
Go ahead, want to perform, go ahead.
What I wanted to talk about was, there's a separate letter you should have, that's the, that, that letter right there, that's a two pager, and the first thing I want to do though is thank the team here, Tony and Marcia, Karen, and of course Crawford and Associates helps with the financial statement preparation and the, and the, what we call the pre-audit type work that's done, and so that makes it work. And, you know, you talked about the smooth transition with auditors and stuff like that, you get everything standardized, going forward, audit firms can come in and do their job quickly, and, and we were able to do that. This letter is, is dated the same day of the audit that we, the audit report that we gave you, and these are the things that the profession requires firms, CPA firms doing audits, to tell you, and you all function as what we call the audit committee, and so in the absence of official audit committee, you are the committee, you're the governing body, so you're going to receive this information. And the, the first thing this talks about, talks about kind of what we did in the first paragraph, it's kind of an introductory thing, but it, but it talks about accounting policies, and those are summarized in your notes to financial statements in the, in that big document that, that, the one with the picture on it. Yes, that. And so it, the notes to the financials in there have the significant accounting policies. We noted no new accounting policies that were adopted during the year 2014, no transactions entered into for which there's a lack of authoritative guidance, by that being, we mean new BASDs, new GASBs, things that, that come out and, and cover what you're doing. The next paragraph talks about accounting estimates, and you can't do this stuff without estimates. Very, very few entities can be, can be accounted for without estimates, and so estimates involve things like appreciation, appreciation, appreciation lives of the, the, your fixed assets and those kind of things. The most significant estimate that you've got though relates to your accounts receivable and court finds receivable, the past due balances and those kind of things, and so those, those affect your financial position. And then certain financial disclosures you have are, are sensitive, and so we felt the most sensitive disclosures that you have affect the commitments and contingencies that are in note 13 that relate to litigation and things like that that are going on. The, the, the main thing is the financial statement disclosures are neutral, consistent, and clear. The next paragraph talks about significant difficulties, we noted none, or we experienced no significant difficulties in performing your audit. Corrected and uncorrected misstatements, you may have these from time to time. There was one past adjustment. Past adjustment means that we discovered it, but it was so small, we didn't make it. And that was the 34,000 in a sales tax rebate expense that we didn't make. But all the others.
That was on the tax income district.
But, but, no, no, that was from rebate from.
I mean, I'm sorry, from sales tax.
Okay, I was going to say, okay, but I'm going to talk about that real quick, since you, you've wasted, I'm joking, you've talked a long time of this, but I'm going to kind defend these folks a little bit, just because it always kind of agitates, and I like sniffing at you because I'm the one who's looking. You know, how, how, how would Tony and Marcia determine what, what the sales tax rebate was unless, unless after they came back and they went in and applied for it, and, and only after they get to certain areas, until they get to a certain 75%, do they get back the money? And that's the moral question is, when I read this, well, no offense, I'm just going to jump on you teasingly, but how, how would you, if that's all you found, that's great.
Yeah.
So, but, but I mean, there's no way that you could.
It's a look back.
Yeah, okay, all right.
Okay.
It was a payable.
Sure, but I mean, but you, but.
And that was the first one, by the way.
Which, you only, you only got to one certain, you only got, they had to hit to a certain amount in order to do it, so we had to get that amount.
It was so small, we didn't.
Okay.
We didn't mess with it.
I just.
But I'm telling you, this is.
We could have estimated it.
That's good.
In the interest of clarity.
It's great.
Okay. No disagreements, those were in the course of the audit. Management made representation to us in a management representation letter dated January 28.
She didn't complain about the thermostat.
Oh, well.
You didn't have a perfect schedule out of there, that's an old trick.
Just kidding.
The, yeah, smoke us out.
Yeah.
The next paragraph talks about management consultations with other independent accounts. Of course, you use Crawford and Associates. To our knowledge, there were no such consultations where we would, we would differ or anything like that. Of course, there's discussions all the time when you're doing an audit, but, but to our knowledge, there were no differences, the differences of opinions between consultants, no other findings. These last two or three paragraphs here talk about our responsibility as it relates to supplemental information in your audit. Once again, your audit was a clean opinion, and it was, it's what you call an unqualified opinion, and on page five of your audit report, that's where that is, and that's where, if you ever have a question about anything related to the audit, please call me, that's where my telephone number is, it's on that letterhead right there on page five, and so please give me a call. My name is Jim Denton, and I'm a managing partner for the firm, and we have another partner that worked on this as well, Ladona Sinney, she worked on it, she was on site during the audit. And then, as far as good information as it relates to the financial position of the city, if you look at page 11 in your, in your report, it indicates that there was 42 million in equity, and 27 of that was represented in fixed assets, net of debt, and then, and then the rest, 9, 9 million was, was restricted, and then about 5 million was unrestricted. And so, like you said, you know, it's a good position to be in. Then, the next page talks about activities for the year on page 12, and the main, the[1768.62]
the main difference between the two years, uh, you have a five hundred and twenty thousand dollar increase during the current year, that's right down at the bottom of page twelve, compared to a two million eight hundred thousand, or two, two point nine million increase a year ago, the main difference is that tornado insurance revenue you got in the prior year, so you didn't have that this year, um, the other thing is debt, that I talk to people about, and, and, uh, if you look over on page forty-one of the, of the financials, and I don't want to get too inside baseball on this, but, but page forty-one starts there on note seven, you talked about debt, you added four point five million, and that particular note is the revenue bonds, and that's summarized over on page, that's detailed over on page forty-five of your report, and you can see the two thousand thirteen sales tax bonds coming in on there, and if you look on page forty-six, forty-six gives you an idea of the future payments and when they are, and if you add the two interest columns together, uh, on your debt, it comes to over ten point five million dollars worth of interest that you're going to pay over time on your debt, and that's right here in the report.
Well, he's referring to the twenty thirteen bond issue, we haven't spent, we haven't turned down any fixed assets, we will.
Yeah, I was going to say, we will.
But, uh, because that's going to build the community center, as well as, uh, you know, uh, the project at the library, so, uh, we.
We've held that back, based on.
And we're putting roads on the ground.
Yeah, so that makes going out now too, based on waterline projects and road projects.
Yeah.
Well, Jim, let's do this, I, I, is there any other questions?
Any questions? I brought Lindsay with me, she worked on the audit too, and so you probably recognize her face, you were here during the audit, so, so anyway, that's our.
Let's just do a quick, if you can, get with Marcia and Tony, we're very much sure he's there, and Marcia and, 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 if we can just block out an hour when no one's that busy, just if, if, if Ladonna, you, and, and, uh, Crawford, Lindsay, and everybody else, just kind of spend, we'll block out an hour, just to come, and if everybody wants to kind of show up, we'll split it up into council, see what the interest is, if they want to come, they can, if they don't want to, then we'll reschedule, and make it about an hour and a half, no, no big production, just go over, do you mind doing that?
I don't mind.
I, I just think it's important, don't you think? And I think it was really helpful when we did that, don't you think?
I, I think so, I think it's a good idea.
Yeah, okay, well, thank you, Marcia, you were happy? Were you and Karen happy? Okay.
She's still alive, so.
Yeah.
We thank you for your business.
Okay.
We're an Edmund firm, we're local, uh, we're licensed, we're a.
Well, glad you're licensed.
Did your issue pass, or did you?
What's that?
Did your issue pass tonight, or did you not?
I don't know.
At Edmund, I don't know.
Okay, Jim, thank you, thank you guys, okay, any questions, discussion?
All right.
We're going to twenty-one, scooters. Uh, discussion consideration possible approval of, uh, special mix alcohol vendors permit for El Reno Main Street, to sell low point beer at Burger Day Festival downtown El Reno. Well, that's a pretty simple deal, we've always had, uh, beer at Burger Days for the last, I think, since we became mayor seven years ago, when we first passed another one, I think the whole thing is going to be a little bit different, they're going to sell at low point, and they're going to have it open, I think that'd be a little bit better, I think, we tried to kind of do that last year, but I think the plan was already in motion, I think everything sounds pretty good, they're going to have the final markings event for the twenty-one, and, and do your deal, and go from there, I think responsibly. Uh, do I have a motion for, go ahead.
Should we accept that, the, should, do you need a motion?
You know what, I think I do.
Do I need a motion, or?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, David, okay, I might, let's go back to twenty, because I think you're right, I thought it was just discussion, but it is acceptance of it, we have to accept it by, by, by law, I think, don't we?
Except in.
Yeah, okay, so, I, I've got a motion?
Yes.
Second, real call, let's start with Delano.
Yes.
Thank you, thank you so much.
And it's about the financial statement.
Financial statement and the independent audit report, is what he said, okay, and that'll be my motion.
Vice Mayor Conister?
Yes.
Councilor Robinson?
Yes.
Councilman Archer?
Yes.
Mayor White?
Yes, all right, now, twenty-one, what I just discussed, any other questions, make a motion for approval? Real call, let's start with Delano.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Conister?
Yes.
Councilman Robinson?
Yes.
Councilman Archer?
Yes.
Mayor White?
Yes, okay, twenty-two, we, uh, make a motion to table?
That's the second. Or I'll make the motion.
Okay, okay, now, second?
Second.
Real call, let's start with Archer.
Yes.
Councilor Robinson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Conister?
Yes.
Councilor Delano?
Yes.
Mayor White?
Yes, okay, we'll move on, presentation of financial report, apparently we got money coming, we're, we're six, all right, bring in five point nine, any other discussions?
We only have one question.
On the financials?
Yeah.
Go ahead, David.
Sales tax report, just, the use tax from last year to this year was substantially different, was it some unique situation, or?
It varies all over.
Well, it just seemed like that was.
Use tax goes all over the place, depending on construction, that's where it typically generates the most use.
Well, but, but two months, two months before that, it was also what you're seeing, David.
It depends on construction.
Depends on construction, and, and don't forget, it is, it is, uh, 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 thirty days behind, is that right?
Well, it depends on when they file, sometimes they file, you know, later than that, so.